Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Rosky.
Here.
Mr. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin this evening talking just for a couple of minutes about an important public art and a new program the city's partnering with the Warren Consolidated School District with. According to the Americans for the Arts Organization, art has the power to change communities and break down cultural barriers. Art has the ability to transcend language and bring people together. The city's monthly featured artist exhibit and the Sterling Scape's exhibit are two important programs which help achieve these objectives, not to mention our very strong partnership with the Detroit Institute of Art, better known as the DIA. Warren Consolidated Schools hosts a spring art show for students each year, traditionally at the Warren Community Center. Recently, we were approached by Warren Consolidated School officials to ask if they could relocate the show to Sterling Heights for 2018 and possibly the future as well. While our community center is not yet built, we are pleased to announce the art show will be held at the Senior Center this year. The art show began set up today with teachers bringing in the student artwork and hanging it throughout the halls and corridors of the Senior Center. On April 25th and the 26th, retired teachers from Warren Consolidated Schools will be coming to judge the artwork. There'll be an award ceremony on Monday, May 7th from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m., and members of our Arts Commission plan to attend the ceremony on behalf of the city. As an extension of the city's public art program, this is a wonderful collaboration between the city of Sterling Heights and Warren Consolidated Schools. It shows we are supportive not only to art but to students and teachers as well. This also gives exposure to the student artwork every day at our bustling Senior Center. Our hope is that the Warren Consolidated Schools' student art display can become a longstanding program featured in the city's new community center, which will begin construction this year. By continuing to grow our public art presence, we are strengthening the community's commitment to art and culture as a shared value consistent with our city's Visioning 2030 Plan. And I wanted to take just a couple seconds here to show some of our existing artwork. Many of you are familiar with this. It's been around the city for decades and continues to receive a lot of attention, and I know the community is very proud of these pieces. Whoops. So going backwards, the spirit of Sterling Heights is just outside. You see the two bears in front of the library. And soon, a mural which was painted by students will be displayed on our library wall just outside the children's center. And you can see, this is really awesome. It's a huge mural, and we look forward to getting it up very soon. And it certainly will be a focal point for the community. And this is our featured artist program, so this will be similar to some of the displays that we'll see from the Warren Consolidated Students. And we really look forward to this partnership with Warren Consolidated Schools, and I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of it on display over the ensuing months. And continuing on, I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to talk about some of our construction projects that you're going to see going on. Many of you may know that we're doing all that we can to clean up the highly visible corners in our city. So, for example, on many corners, we have gas stations. And on the screen before you, this is a particular station over at Metrol Parkway into Quinder. And this was a previous structure that was anything but appealing. And fortunately, we were able to work with the property owner, and that structure has since been demolished. Many of you may have seen the ongoing construction work. There was a delay for a few months, but the construction work has started up again. And you can see the building is very aesthetically pleasing and will be a vast improvement for that corner, actually the gateway into our city as you're traveling west into Sterling Heights. And this is a final rendering. I don't have a color copy, but needless to say, the front's going to look very nice as well. And shifting gears, going up the road to Eighteen Mile into Quinder, we had the same problem there. We had a very unsightly gas station on that corner. We had a lot of code issues with it. You can see one of our code signs in front of it in this picture from earlier this year, well, actually just last month. And I'm pleased to announce that construction has already started on this project, and the building is mostly down now. And a new service, our gas station with a convenience center, will be constructed on the site, and you can see what it'll look like when it's done. Certainly, again, a vast improvement to that particular corner. And then soon, while this is not a blighted site, it's certainly a site where we've had problems with tall grass and just general maintenance of the property. This will be replaced with a gas station. While that may not sound exciting, however, it will be one of the nicest ones in the area. Again, it's very aesthetically pleasing. Any gas station now reconstructed in the city has to consist of primarily masonry facade or stone. The islands itself have to be brick. And in this particular case, the fuel islands will actually be located behind the building, so again, it will, with anything in hand, that corner. So we're going to continue our efforts on these corners and cases where we haven't been able to get the property owner to actually knock down the building and build a new one. We're going to continue our code enforcement efforts vigorously, including the corner at 15 and Van Dyke. In that case, there's two gas stations. One will be reconstructed, and the other one will be going through before Ordinance Board of Appeals very shortly to get that property cleaned up. And also, I wanted to provide just a brief update on Canal Road. The Canal Road project is on the consent agenda this evening. If the city council approves the work, it will begin very soon. It's a very large project. It's $5,338,323. It will encompass a large area and will be under construction the entire construction season. So if I can draw your attention to the map before you, there's actually three sections to this project. So if you look at the left-hand side of the screen, the first section will start on Van Dyke. And that will include repaving Van Dyke, well, excuse me. Actually, the first, the very first section is cleaning up the intersection, redoing the intersection of Van Dyke, Clinton River, and Canal, where it all converges there. It's in very poor shape. That will be completely resurfaced. That will be the very first part of the project. The second stage, or the second part up in that area, will be from the bridge, the Clinton River Bridge, in both directions up to M-59. So as that work is ongoing, there'll be some utility, storm, sewer, repair work and replacement on Canal. So while the work is going on in Van Dyke, there'll be some utility work on Canal itself. So the very first section that I just talked about will go from May until June. And then the second section, which is Canal itself, will be completely improved, including all-new lanes, all the driveways where there's gravel and, you know, cars parked out in the right-of-way. All of that will be cleaned up, much like Dodge Park Road. So it'll be vastly improved. There'll be a number of pedestrian facility improvements, landscaping, and the like. So the second phase will go from what is approximately Canal-Clinton River all the way over to Shaner, and that will start in June and be finished in September. And then the second, or the third and final phase will be from Shaner to Sol Road. You can see from the map, the project kind of wraps around Sol Road a bit and heads in a southerly direction there. So that project or that scope will start in September and be finished in November. There'll be significant lane closures during this project, so I encourage all of you, or whoever is interested, to attend a public forum on April 26 at 6:30 p.m. It'll be at our Senior Center. Again, that's April 26 at 6:30 p.m. It's primarily intended for the residents and businesses along Canal, but the general public is welcome to attend, especially if you want to learn of the detour routes if you do use Canal Road. In addition, we have sent out 3,000 letters to the residents and businesses that are along Canal, so they have a detailed update of the scope of work. So needless to say, this is a huge project. It's one of many that's going to be going on this construction season. And I'll continue to give these updates as the projects near their start times. And speaking of roads, the Department of Public Works is preparing for the annual street sweeping program for all city streets. Program typically begins in late April, early May, runs through the end of November, early December, starting with major roads and moving to neighborhood roads. We typically have four complete revolutions of every road in the city during our street sweeping season, so you can look forward to the sweepers getting around to your area very soon. And lastly, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing to consider the application by AG Simpson, USA Incorporated, for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 6640 Sterling Drive South. We have a presentation from our senior economic development advisor, Luke Bonner. Mr. Bonner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool, and members of city council. Before you this evening is an application by AG Simpson, USA, for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 6640 Sterling Drive South. I'm here to represent AGS, or AG Simpson, is Charbel Abhisamra, Jeff Zulia from AGS, and then Jim Ahie from the Macomb County Planning and Economic Development is also here in attendance. The proposed project is a real property investment of approximately $1.9 million for a real property expansion that'll facilitate the construction of a 20,000-square-foot addition onto the building. The total investment, including personal property at the site, is about $8.9 million and will create 50 new jobs at the location. AGS has been in the community for a long time, since 1979, supplying bumper impact systems and body-in-white structural modules to automotive manufacturers, including GM, FCA, Hino, International Truck, and other Tier One suppliers. Based on the city's tax abatement guidelines, it's a recommended term of nine years, and that's based on 50 full-time jobs created and the $1.9 million of investment that I outlined. From an economic impact standpoint, using a simple multiplier of four for manufacturing project, we anticipate there's additional 200 jobs indirectly created as a result of this project. And with average wages at the location of roughly $45,000, that the total economic impact in the area is approximately $9 million. The annual taxes that'll be generated as a result of the tax abatement is anticipated to be roughly $7,773 of city taxes. That is almost $70,000 over the nine-year term of new taxes generated, $18,238 of school taxes annually, which roughly comes to $164,000 of total school taxes generated over the nine-year term. In addition to that, AGS, like I've mentioned, they've been in the community for a long time. I refer to them sometimes as the gift that keeps on giving. I had mentioned that to Jeff Zulia before the meeting. Because the community continues to grow, they continue to add jobs and invest in facilities here. And just to give you some highlights of what they've done in the community and what they mean in the community, 2006, which is when I actually first started here, is one of the first projects I worked on, AGS reopened its Sterling Drive South facility, creating at that time, which was announced, 130 jobs, and then moving their corporate facilities over from Troy into that location. In 2012, they acquired the former Detroit Center Tool and then Borg Warner Building on Eighteen and a Half Mile, which they now occupy. And I know these numbers have changed dramatically, but in 2012, that was an estimated 90 jobs created in about $30 million of investment. I'm sure Jeff can speak to that. They have done quite a bit more at both of those locations. In 2016, they were named General Motor Supplier of the Year. In 2017, they won the Sterling Edge Business Awards for Manufacturer of the Year. In 2018, they won the Macomb Business Award for Model of Macomb. They've been nominated again in 2018 for Sterling Edge Business Awards for the Community Reinvestment Business of the Year. AGS has participated, or did participate, in our EOS, our Entrepreneurial Operating System Seminar Series in 2017. And they have openly outlined their process of working with the Middle Eastern community in terms of recruitment and hiring practices. And they've done that to the betterment of other companies in the community, to learn that from them as a best practice. And they've also been very open to be highlighted in our economic development video and our printed economic development marketing material. Recently, they encountered or experienced a fire at their location on Sterling Drive South, in which case their engineering, finance, purchasing, and operations people were displaced. And for the next year, until they're able to at least get that part of the facility back up and running, they're actually leasing 5,000 square feet of space at the Velocity Center for Collaboration. So they have, in my opinion, they've been a model corporate partner to the community. They're always accessible. They always participate, and they're always, always willing to come out and do more. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll invite up Jeff Zulia to say a little bit more about AGS.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, I'll be nervous. I guess we couldn't have better cheerleaders, we don't believe, other than, you know, Luke and Jim, who've worked with us this entire time of the expansion. And I want to thank-
I don't think you can hear anything.
All right, excuse me, sir.
Okay.
They're having some trouble. If you want to try to speak into the microphone a little bit more clearly so they could hear you.
Okay, sorry. Is that better?
That's probably better, yes.
All right, I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. I just wanted to say that, you know, we take, you know, our community involvement and participation seriously. I don't think that we could have better supporters than we do in Luke and in Jim from the city and the county. You know, I really want to, you know, thank the city council for considering this, and we've been working hard. We're a company that has our, you know, our heads down and that works hard every day. And when we, you know, started and reopened Sterling South in 2007, we didn't have any employment in the city of Sterling Heights. We brought our employees back from Troy, the 51 that we had at the time, to the city of Sterling Heights, and we've since then grown to over 500 employees in the city of Sterling Heights. We've acquired, you know, 6710 Sterling Drive North, 6690 Sterling Drive North. We've added the expansion at 6640 Sterling Drive South, as well as acquiring the Borg Warner property, and now leasing the space at the Velocity Center. So the support of the city council, the support of MEDC from the city, from the state, and from the county, you know, has made all the difference for us. You know, might think that these programs don't make as much difference as they do, but I'm here to tell you that we would not have experienced all of this growth if it wasn't for all of this support.
All right, great. Thank you very much. If we have any questions for you, we'll call you back up during the council's deliberations. Okay? Thank you very much. This time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, take your- Okay, well, you can speak on that item then. Anyone on this item, Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. He's, Luke spoke about their hiring of, I believe he said, Indian folks, I believe that's what he said. But what are their practices for hiring colored people, minorities? Do they have a plan for, to say, to give some kind of percentage to off on housing for residents here in Sterling Heights? And what's their commitment to how many, what's the percentage, would they be willing to hire of Sterling Heights residents first before they went and looked outside? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. I rise as usual to speak in strong opposition to this totally useless and unwarranted tax abatement. Residential citizens of Sterling Heights pay their full taxes, even if they're unemployed or on social security or minimum wage, wherever it is. We pay our tax. This useless tax abatement's going to cost the city, according to the city's paperwork at least, $26,760 a year, or $241,000 during the term of this ridiculous tax break. This AG Simpson has dug into Sterling Heights to the point where they have no choice to continue to do business here. They really can't leave town, no matter what. There's a claim of 50 new jobs. These ludicrous and baseless claims are put forth on every tax abatement, and none of them have ever been researched or proven. The job multiplier totally bogus. You hire employees at $40,000 or $50,000. How's a man that works, makes $50,000, going to spend enough money to generate four or five jobs? A ridiculous and baseless claim. With the recent tax cuts put through by President Trump and the Republican House, all businesses have tax relief that's far and above more than this. 50 jobs? If they really create the 50 jobs, their cost of labor is going to be $2.6 million. We're getting a $26,000 tax cut. So this tax cut, this tax break equals 1% of their cost of labor. If they can meet the payroll, they can come up with another 1% and pay their tax, just like I do and everybody else that owns a house in Sterling Heights. Now, if we could get AG Simpson to leave town, tear down this plant, demolish it, and put it back to residential, you could put in 30 residential housing units at $150 grand apiece with a taxable value of $4.5 million. This is only $2.9 million, and they want it for half price. If we put this back to residential, the business case, instead of giving away $26,000 a year, we could make $162,000 in property tax from good citizens that actually pay their tax. So we're really talking about $1.4 million loss in taxation by giving this tax break to this out-of-town beggar that wants to come in Sterling Heights, gut our city, take the profits out of town, and not even pay his taxes. As usual, this will be, this will be ignored like all other tax breaks. But when you come back for your one mil tax increase and you have the nerve to try to renew the 2.5 safe streets, well, just look at this. Look back at this money that you blew out. Useless, as always. And you'll go ahead and do it. So I want to welcome the people that live along the drainage ditch and have come out here for one issue, and maybe while you're sitting through the meeting, you'll learn that there's a lot more issues in Sterling Heights than just your one issue. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Who else would like to speak? Thomas Neal, please.
Good evening. I'm not quite as long or as fiery as Mr. Smith is, but I want to make it up. One point is, Mr. Bonner has spoke about Middle Eastern people, and I'm wondering, when you say Middle Eastern people, what do you mean? I mean, not all Middle Eastern people are alike. I mean, I have a family that came from North Africa. I could be considered Middle Eastern, and they came from what is now, you know, Lebanon and Turkey. Do you mean Lebanese people? Do you mean Assyrian people? Do you mean Arab? Do you mean Kheldian? Do you mean Persian? I mean, do you mean Maronite? Or is it just in general? Because I, and I say this because I, as Mr. Taylor noticed quite earlier, I am a Catholic clergyman, and I have divine liturgy for the Eastern Rite Church at my house, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. If you want, you'd be welcome to come. You'd all be welcome to come exactly, except I don't think any of you-
Mr. Neal, can you speak on this topic, please?
I am getting to the point. My point is-
Okay, good, thank you.
I know many people in the Middle Eastern community who live in Sterling Heights and who are desperately looking for work, yet you've claimed that you're employing all Middle Eastern people. And I'm just surprised how, if you're hiring them, or if you plan to hire any of them, or if you're just trying to say that to try to make a blank, placated statement. Much like Mr. Jefferson said earlier, why aren't you hiring anybody from any other community? You're not hiring any other of any racial types. So just curious about why you made that statement. In addition to that, we have all these people here, and back me, many of them are senior citizens, and I wonder if they're aware that tax abatement means, you know, they're not paying money. They're paying more money. As you said earlier, you and Mr. Vanderpool were on Channel, or I know you're on Channel 7. I don't know if you run other ones, but you were talking about, oh, we need more money for roads, and we need a supposedly one-time tax hike to fix roads. So if we need more money to fix roads, so you're saying that all these people here should pay more money for more roads, including, yet the people, you know, saying, well, they're, should not have to pay more money to fix roads. It's, I mean, you're taking from one to the other. Pretty interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else on this item? Not, yes, you, sir?
My name's Gene Ikorst. I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for 37 years. I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for 37 years. Oh, I've got one quick question for you people. Is, all these tax exempt exemptions you've been given, these companies, have you ever gone back to find out if they've been keeping their promises? That's the only question I've got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ikorst. Anyone else on the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
We're sought to adopt the resolution approving the application by AG Simpson USA Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax-exempt certificate at 6640 Sterling Drive South, parcel number 10-33-326-004-000, for a period of nine years, in accordance with the guidelines established by the city council, and the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to sign, as applicable, all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Shannon?
The only discussion I would have is if we, if I could, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, could Mr. Vanderpoel please explain how businesses will, first of all, be paying the, if we are able to get the one mil, one-time increase, that businesses will also be paying that? And then also, a little bit more information on how increased investment in the city, even with the tax abatement, is still an increase in taxes for the city. If you could explain that to the residents, and that's all I'll have it.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Shannon, I'd be happy to. Well, first of all, the abatement, as Mr. Bonner indicated, equates to, for city taxes, $7,773 annually, over a nine-year period of time. So, while that same amount is being abated, and this is only on the new investment, the property owner continues to pay their current full freight on property taxes. So this is just a 50% abatement on the new investment that they're making. So that means the city's getting 50% more in new revenue from the investment that we can use toward general fund purposes, including roads. Now, by the way, you all know, $7,000 is not going to get us a lot in road improvements. The whole idea behind the industrial tax abatement program is that it incentivizes businesses to continue to reinvest in Sterling Heights. If we don't have that program, there's an incentive for companies to look at other cities to invest in. In some cases, our businesses have multiple locations in other cities. So if we eliminate the program, the investments likely go to other communities. So in order to keep a competitive edge, if you will, it would be foolish, financially foolish and negligent, for us to eliminate a program like this. And I might add that Sterling Heights, you may recall, I mentioned at a previous council meeting just a month or so ago, has the highest industrial manufacturing property valuation in the state. That's pretty remarkable, when you consider communities like Grand Rapids have a pretty sizable manufacturing base. That means we have tens of thousands of employees that work in Sterling Heights because of that very strong manufacturing base. They in turn shop in our city, buy gas in the city, build homes in the city, buy cars in the city. The economic impact from these manufacturing jobs is enormous. Manufacturing has the largest economic impact of any sector in our economy, higher than the service sector, higher than the retail sector, and so on. It is the highest economic impact. It pays to make products in our country. So, the point is, the abatements are 50% on only the new investment, and at the same time, we get 50% new revenue from the investment. And let me just close by saying, Councilman Shannon, that it's one reason why, the Sterling Heights tax base is about 70/30, meaning businesses pay about 30%. Overall, our tax base is made up by businesses paying taxes. Now, that's a large number. In most cases, it's 90/10 at best in most communities. So that's a very large percentage, and because of that, Sterling Heights has been able to keep a very low tax rate for our city, well below average throughout the state, and the lowest in Macomb County of a full-service community. So the model is working, and I would encourage the city council to continue their strong position on fostering the growth of our business, our commercial and manufacturing tax base, because the entire community benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Shannon, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Mrs. Zarco, anything?
I'm fine.
Counsel, any further, Mr. Raki?
Through the chair to Mr. Bonner. How do we verify that people are actually creating the jobs and doing the investment for abating their taxes?
Well, for this particular example, Mr. Zulia had mentioned that when they came back to the city, it was roughly 51 jobs, and they have, you know, over 500 jobs today. We have a, and it's in the tax payment application, I'm drawing a blank on what the actual, what the actual name of the form is, but either through myself or through the assessing office, we're doing, I'll call them routine check-ins with business. I mean, it's part of what we do on the business outreach standpoint. So we are checking to see where employment numbers are, for a couple of reasons. Number one, it is, you know, as a result of the tax abatement, you know, how's business going? Number two, it's business overall, are you adding jobs? And number three, it allows us also to get a gauge of where the economy's going. So, you know, being here in 2008 and going out on some visits where, you know, jobs were starting to decline was an indication of things changing in the economy. But we do, short answer is, we go out and meet with these companies every year. We're meeting with about, you know, 50 or 60, 70 companies, along with Macomb County and the state of Michigan, to do kind of this, this health check-in with them to see where everybody's at.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
I also want to add to that, and Mr. Bonner can reinforce that, the agreement that we have with the company, if they should premature vacate the facility, there is a penalty there, a repayment of some kind, I believe, for the taxes that were abated. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have a standard IFEC letter of agreement that essentially everyone who applies for a tax abatement signs, and within that agreement, you are correct, if there's a premature vacation of the facility, for, if not for business purposes, I mean, obviously if there's a loss of business, if there's a loss of a contract, and there's something catastrophic that happens to the company, that's one thing, but if the company leaves that facility or leaves the city altogether, that they have agreed in that agreement that we are allowed to ask for repayment of those taxes if they do indeed leave the city.
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I'll just say to AG Simpson, you know, thank you for your continued investment in Sterling Heights. Some of the comments here are, well, I'll just say they're not representative of the way that the community feels about manufacturing firms that are in this city, providing hundreds and thousands of jobs for our residents, improving our quality of life, and making this a great place to live. So, we want to thank you for your continued investment in Sterling Heights, and wish you nothing but success, and hope to see you back here with more expansions in the future. So, council, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Smith?
Looks like we've got a consent agenda with more money in it than the whole budget had when some of the ladies first came to council. I'd like to talk about item J for a start. This is rebuilding or repaving Shaner from 15 Mile to Plumbrook. Back when I was in the business, this is what you call getting caught off sides. It's when you start doing a job before the money's approved. And I happened to drive this strip of Shaner from 15 to Plumbrook, and the job's already in progress, the barrels are out, and people are working on it, and we're just now talking about the funds. That's what you call getting off sides, when you approve the money after the work started. And to read the backup data, this is a $3.8 million job. Put it in millage funds, this is like worth .8 mils for a year. We're talking about one full mil for a year to pay for street improvements that we can't afford. Well, here's a street improvement that's basically eight tenths of a mil, and it's just on a consent agenda, and of that, the city of Sterling Heights has asked to kick in a slight co-pay of $177,000, which is less than 5% of the cost of the work. 95% of the job is being done by handouts from the federal and state government, and at the last meeting, Mrs. Zarco recited the old Brian Baker mantra about how nobody ever gives us any money, we don't get any handouts. Mr. Vanderpoel said this, and Baker, we're, we got so much trouble because nobody ever gives us any handouts. Well, here's a $3.8 million handout we got. I'm surprised they're not out here doing a victory dance with a giant oversized check for getting $3.8 million from higher governments, but that never happens. We got items K and L. Here's a couple of trivial little items. $28.5 million of bonds the city's going to sell, 20-year bonds, is $28.5 million of indebtedness that isn't worth talking about. Well, basically, this is like payday loans on a city scale. Instead of waiting until the tax comes in, we're going to go to payday loans and borrow the money upfront so we can spend money we don't have. Here we got some people with a two-year term of office that are making a 20-year spending commitment. That's more than just a little bit out of line. So this $28.5 million, well, how are they going to handle this loan? Are they going to just do nothing and let the interest pile up, and 20 years from now we owe 48 million? Or are we going to just pay the interest, and it's going to cost us 44 million? Or maybe we'll pay, make payments every year like a mortgage, and the 28 million costs us 35 million then? But whether it's 48 million, or 44, or 35 million, it seems like $28.5 million in a two-year indebtedness, or 20-year indebtedness by a council with less than a year to go on their term, that's way out of line, and it's certainly a piece of business that needs to be treated as a piece of business, and not just paying the phone bill like the consent agenda's intended for. Thank you very much, thanks for coming in, and I hope our new visitors get a little more involved in more than just one issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Thomas Neal? Looks reasonably well-placed to me. Come on up, Mr. Neal, don't be shy.
Oh, I was waiting for Mr. Jefferson to stop. I don't like to interrupt people unlike you. And speaking of that, thank you for, excuse me, Mr. Raki, let me know when you're done. Thank you. Thank you for letting us all know of your last comments that, you know, no one here. So remember that whenever you come to a city council meeting, that no one here is representative, as Mr. Taylor said, of the entire city of Sterling Heights, even the people who've lived here for 30, 40 years. I wanted to make a point about point E. I meant, a simple question, if this is in addition to the Parks Millage, or if this is part of the Parks Millage payment? And the point J, I would like to make a point, I was talking to a city engineer from the County Road Commission, and they were saying that this was a short-term fix. In other words, he told me himself that in about five or six years, Shaner's going to be needed, fixed again. He said it really should be an eight or nine million dollar project, and he said this is more like a, you know, short-term fix, and we don't have the money. So I'm wondering, you know, in regards of everything that Mr. Smith said, why are we doing short-term fixes on roads? Why are we basically just resurfacing it? Why not we doing like what happened on Van Dyke where, or what's going to be done on Mount, or whatnot, on other major roads? Or like how they fixed 94, or like they're fixing 696, they're not just going to resurface 696, they're going to completely rebuild it, so it can last decades. So, my question is, are we going to be paying all this money, again, in four or five years, as the city engineer for the county said? Thank you.
Anyone else on the consent agenda? Mr. Marshallons?
My name's Harry Marshallons. Been a resident of Sterling Heights forever. I take a different view of the consent agenda. Believe me, I do have a great deal of confidence in the people that we have running the city. I believe we have a great deal of technical ability, and I know there's a lot of thought that goes into these, probably in other chambers and other conversations beyond what we hear out here. The only thing that I would ask, and I don't question any money that's shown on here, the only thing I would ask is, when these are published, is there any way that you can also make a statement saying, what is happening here is not going to raise the taxes within the next two-year period? That's really all we care about. We don't care what you spend, we want the city to progress, we want the roads to be so they aren't proving grounds, and we'd like the streets to be better than the county would like the sidewalks to be. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marshallons. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item to consider approval of the fiscal year 2018, 2019, Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Before you tonight is council's consideration of the 2018, 2019 CDBG One-Year Action Plan, which is basically the roadmap for the city in terms of spending our CDBG funding for the upcoming year. The estimated allocation for this year is approximately $716,925. I say approximately because that number has yet to be finalized by the county and by the federal government, and that is typical for CDBG funding, as that number continues to be refined through their mathematical formulas, the city's final determination will be finalized in the upcoming months. These funds are to be utilized by the city, or how we utilize them best is in terms of housing revitalization and revitalizing our neighborhoods, and also improving community facilities and programs for low and moderate income persons within the city themselves. In terms of funding considerations, these are taken into account by our commission in terms of providing recommendations, how many residents will benefit from the program, has the requesting agency complied with the past CDBG contract requirements, did the agency attend and present their request at the public hearing, and was the requesting agency able to answer questions about their program itself? And this is all taken into consideration by the Citizen Advisory Committee, which obviously puts this plan together and then boards that information onto city council for your final approval. In terms of the actual allocations themselves, the first funding category would include the public services category. This is capped at 15% of our total allocation, so for this year, we're using an estimation number of about $107,538. In terms of these public services, they include Turning Point, Salvation Army, the library, Wigs for Kids, Carehouse, McRest, amongst several others. But again, the total allocations for these are just over $107,000. In terms of capital projects, which is the bulk of the money to be utilized, this totals about 65% of the total allocation, you can see, about $466,000. Newell Drive- Newell Drive Concrete Replacements, Senior Center Fitness Room Carpet, Tree Plantings, Minor Home Repair Program, as well as Senior Center Parking Lot Expansion. Those are some of the big hitters that are within a particular category in your backup information. You obviously have the full list, but those are some of the highlights from there. So with that, that kind of sums up the actual CDBG program in terms of spending. The remaining money, if those of you are counting up the percentage allocations, is used for administration of the program. That is used to fund for the administrative staff as well as the granting grant applications that are performed by some of our other administrative functions and partners in terms of supplying that information. So with that, staff is recommending, along with the Citizen Advisory Commission or committee, that the CDBG funds for 2018-2019 be approved as presented.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. I took a look at the history of this program and quite a few of the -- well, several of the old city budgets on file. And I noticed that the city always skims off a 20% administration fee on these. It sure comes to mind, it's strange, in this and Item 1, the tax abatement, both of which are less than a million dollars, we had an agenda item and we had a consent agenda with 33 million that wasn't worth discussing, but we're discussing a much smaller item now. But according to the verbiage in the budget, the most the city can skim off of community block grants for administration is 20%. And our city manager routinely skims off every penny of the permissible 20%. So he's within the law to skim off 20% for administration. He's not breaking the law in that way, except does it really cost $140,000, which is to say a full man year's labor of a well-paid person to administrate $719 million? I think in an honest world, you really couldn't defend $140,000 worth of administration on this much money. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Mr. McLeod, could you explain the administrative costs that go into this program?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee and city administration based on an estimated entitlement of $716,925 and authorized city administration to complete the federal application and secure the funds.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Zarco?
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Would you like to respond to any of the comments that were made by residents?
Mr. McLeod.
I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the administration of the program, the block grant program is a very detailed, paper-oriented, if you will, program where there's a lot of information that's necessary to go back and forth between ourselves and the federal government in terms of, for instance, minor home repair. Every person that qualifies, every person that comes in and says they want something done as part of minor home repair, our administration goes through and vets each one of those people. They go through their application process. They walk them through the entire process. Once that process is done, they have to go to the home, inspect the site themselves, and then go through the paperwork to say that the entire project is then complete. And that's all for a $500 grant. So that's just one level of detail. So you multiply that over the course of all the different programs that the city funds and all the benefit that those programs fund. I think that the money is well-spent in terms of the administration. You know, we basically have one person dedicated in the office specifically for CDBG and Teresa does a very good job in terms of administering that program. She's done it for a while now. But I think, you know, in terms of the everyday operation, there is constantly communication going back and forth between our HUD officials in the city and then obviously between residents or program administrators that we sub out to in terms of constant paperwork, in terms of constant questions being answered and so forth, that literally it is a full-time job to do. So again, I think that the administrative costs, why, as Mr. Smith noted, it's a lawful function. In this case, in terms of full administration, it takes that much time and effort to do.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. You certainly did explain that very well. I guess my other question would be, were there any different nonprofits that were at the meeting that requested funds that we didn't provide funds to? So anybody that pretty much showed up and asked, they got something?
Correct. Anyone that was vetted through the process and came and requested money received, they may have not received their full request, but everyone that was vetted and deemed to be appropriate through the program was granted some form of funding.
And it's my understanding that the groups that presented and their request, we cannot give them more than 15% of the total that we're getting, so that's how we determine how much money that they're getting as opposed to what we're using throughout the city. Is that correct?
In terms of public services, that's correct. So anyone offering a service, our cap is 15% of our total allocation. So as our allocation fluxes, you know, when that final number's determined, our percentage or total number of dollars of that equals 15% may flex a little bit as well. And those numbers will be finalized and adjusted all the way through, you know, going down, trickling down. But yes, to answer shortly, it's 15% cap. So if that number that they request is over that 15%, then that's where you start to make those delineations to say they may only get 80% of their request. So that way we can fit in terms of the total number of dollars that we have.
And because we don't know exactly how much money we're getting, we'll make any adjustments that we have to if we're not getting as much as what's being presented tonight, correct?
So whether that number goes up or down, ultimately Teresa will go in, myself will go through and determine exactly. In terms of public services, that number will go up percentage-wise equally across. So if we get another 1% of dollars, let's say, each one of the allocations for public services will go up 1% or the equal amount. In terms of project per capital funds, if there's additional monies above that $716,925 and then the allocation per capital, those will go into the Newell Drive project. And the same thing goes in terms of any, if the number is actually lower, let's say it's $700,000 rather than $716,000, the same percentages lowering will go down and the capital improvements will come out of the Newell project itself. So that's how the allocation will occur. And again, that's typical for CDBG funding. They base, they say you base this year's allocation off of what last year's actual was and they keep rolling that system over and over and over.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right. Anyone else on council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Council, we have two appointments tonight to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2. One is for a term ending 6/30/18 and one for 6/30/19. Is there a council member who'd like to make, take an action?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Brian Cole to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 to a term ending June 30, 2018, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There is a second appointment, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Louis Marinelli to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 to a term ending June 30, 2019, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? I think I'll start on my right. Well, I'll start with you, ma'am, since you've been standing, waiting patiently the whole meeting.
My name is Caroline Hardy.
Do you mind taking the microphone and moving it down a little bit?
My name is Caroline Hardy. I live in Shaner Towers. I've helped Senator Carl with his election in the past. I've helped Senator D'Nello with his election and I've helped with presidential elections. So I've done a lot of political things. But this is the thing, in 2004, I was diagnosed as having multiple sclerosis and I've been on no medication for the last seven years and I'm doing good. And in your meeting, I stood in the back for almost 45 minutes, standing in one place and people with multiple sclerosis cannot do that. And I stood with my coat in my hand. But this is the thing, I found some things on my furniture, medical devices that were not authorized and stuff like that within the last months. And this is the thing, in doctors' offices and stores that I've been in, they've had these medical devices. And about a month ago, I had to go to the emergency room and on the gurney was the medical device. And this is the thing with the medical device, it cramps your legs and your calves. So it causes problems. So for the last couple of months, I've had to be in and out of una boots and stuff like that for the swelling. And it cramps your calves and stuff. And so when I was in the hospital, it started cramping my calves. So they turned the medical device down and when they did, it caused heart arrhythmia where my heart rate went way up. And I've never, you know, I never had a heart problem or anything like that. It was because of the medical device. It induced it. And so anyways, it also caused high blood pressure. I had, within the last couple of months since the medical device, I had to be on blood pressure medicine. So the doctor, the present doctor I went to was through my church and his wife goes to this doctor and he took me off the blood pressure medicine and I haven't been sitting on those medical devices. My blood pressure is now normal. So it shows you, it induced my heart, it made the blood pressure go up and it caused, you know, the cramping in the legs. But I just wanted to make the public aware of it because these things are in doctors' offices, they're in stores, like they were putting them in the handlebars at the stores and things like that. They have them in the seats at doctors' offices and things like that where you're going, you know, frequenting. And people do not know that it affects your heart and everything like that. And I found it out by accident, you know, because it was happening. So, but anyways, the doctors did not authorize this for me. So I wrote like certified letters to the doctors telling them they did not authorize this for me and stuff like that. So, and the thing is, I do not need them and as you can see, I'm healthy because I was standing back there for about 45 minutes, you know, and I'm standing now. And so I'm doing really good. So the thing is, I'm just making the public aware that this is going on in doctors' offices and places you're frequenting and that they affect your blood pressure, they affect your heart because they make the arrhythmia go up and stuff like that. And people are not aware that it causes medical problems, you know, and stuff like that. So, but the thing is, my blood pressure is now normal. And so it shows, you know, without them, I'm doing better. So that's all I want to say.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody on my right side who'd like to speak? Start with you, Mr. Marshall Owens. I'll move to the middle next, okay?
If I may use the overhead.
Sir, I need them off my furniture.
What are we looking at?
Okay.
I need them off my furniture.
All right, ma'am, we heard you. If you have an issue, you can contact our -- call the city administrative offices tomorrow and they'll make sure to take care of it, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Marshall Owens. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. My name's Harry Marshall Owens. I'm here to talk about the Sterling Heights relief drain thing that the county was proposing. This is a letter that all 649 of us got. And it states in here that we've placed obstructions on the drain in an area from that wall to this edge here. That's what the horizontal surface looks like. Then there's a ditch in between. I have a fire pit out there and it says that it obstructs the grass cutting, so we had to remove it. But we cut all of that with regular lawn mowers and I even fertilize it and get rid of the weeds. So the thing of it is, now the county has reversed themselves, they want to plant trees out there. Now, I know all of you have said we need to do something to make the ditch look better. Cutting the grass would be the thing. If you cut the grass, it turns into a beautiful lawn that looks like a fairway at a country club. Now this is what we're looking at out there. You'll note that there is a bicycle path that runs from Metropolitan Beach all the way to Freedom Hill on 16 Mile Road. There is another bicycle path that goes all the way through the City of Troy on 16 Mile Road. The only reasonable solution to an additional sidewalk for bicycles would be to use the sidewalk on 16 Mile. That would make one straight shot all the way across. What has been proposed is what's in red, which means you're going to go about a mile and a half in a ditch, you're going to come up a half a mile, then you're going to go across the sidewalk that I propose, come down a half a mile, go two and a half miles to the back road and then come up a half a mile to Freedom Hill. Now, anybody that lives north of 16 Mile, if they come down on a bicycle, they have to ride on the sidewalks just like we have on 16 Mile. In order to get to the ditch, they actually have to ride another half a mile so that they get the excitement of riding in a weed-infested ditch. Now, if you're coming from 14 Mile, you get to ride on those same sidewalks that we have on 16 Mile all the way up to the ditch. And then you get to ride up to 16 Mile, across 16 Mile, down Van Dyke and across the ditch again to get to Freedom Hill. Now, our solution, the residents of the ditch would like to suggest the council talk with the county and just tell them, six to eight million dollars for a sidewalk that we already have. And the master plan for Sterling Heights shows these mile roads as bicycle paths. I mean, it takes a complete idiot not to understand that, okay?
All right. Thank you.
I wouldn't insult anybody, but I would say it takes an idiot. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on my right side over here?
Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Kay. My name is George. I have lived along the Sterling Relief Drain for 24 years. It is my understanding that the county project for the relief drain has two components. Number one, a linear park or bike trail. Number two, improvements to the drain. I am in residence are opposed to a linear park or bike trail being built in our backyards. It is my opinion that a bike trail should not be called a park. Black's Law Dictionary defines a park as "an enclosed pleasure ground in or near a city set apart for the recreation of the public." With the bike trail behind your home that is open to the public, I think it would be normal for any homeowner to have concerns about for any homeowner to have concerns about privacy and security. Mayor Taylor and Mr. Garapie on the planning commission might disagree. Mayor Taylor, speaking from experience of millions of people in the entire country, said evidence shows trails increase property values, and having people around reduces crime. Mayor Taylor, I ask, where did you get this evidence? And do you believe there will be a lot of people hanging around this bike trail in the relief drain? Mayor Taylor said living close to a park where you have a lot of people congregating makes it less likely that someone would commit a criminal act or burglarize your house. This is probably true for a real park. A bike trail in a drain is not a park, in my opinion. Lipstick on a pig is still a pig, and I do not believe there will be lots of people congregating on this bike trail. I think most crimes are committed in darkness, and this could be true on a bike trail behind our homes that is wide open to the public twenty-four seven. Mayor Taylor wants residents to research what is going on in other communities, states, and country, in the country where there are trails. Mayor Taylor, you need to understand residents are concerned about their own backyard and not what is going on in other areas. Mayor Taylor said there are trails like this throughout the state and country where privacy and crime are not an issue. If this statement was intended to make residents feel at ease about a bike trail in their backyard, it did not work for me. Residents had only four minutes each to express their concerns about the bike trail. Mayor Taylor spoke at the last meeting for almost eight minutes, and in my opinion, he was trying to convince residents that their concerns are not valid. Mayor Taylor, I don't believe your opinion on bike trails has a lot of weight with residents living on the relief drain. Mayor Taylor said he would keep an open mind to what residents have to say, which I don't believe, and he would report back to Commissioner Miller. I and some residents met with Commissioner Miller and shared our concerns about the proposed bike trail. This meeting was very refreshing. Commissioner Miller had no speaking time limits. She was very respectful, courteous, not rude, and certainly not arrogant. Any decision for or against this bike trail should be made by a majority of council and not by Mayor Taylor alone. Sterling Heights has a council form of government, which means the mayor is essentially a ceremonial figurehead and not the primary decision maker. In conclusion, I asked Liz, Maria, Deanna, and Barb to listen to their residents' concerns about the bike trail with your heart. Please do not turn your back on us and walk away. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else on the right side over here? Ma'am, I see your hand. You can, I will make sure to call on you. Anyone else on the right side? If not, okay, I'll take you. All right, Mr. Ikorst. Right, just in the nick of time there.
Gene Ikorst. I might object to this drainage park or bike trail, whatever you want to call it, for one main reason. There are a lot of other things that we should be done that take priority. This park is not a priority. We've got plenty of good sidewalks. We've got a trail only a thousand feet to the north. There's no need for this park. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my right? If not, ma'am, you can come up now.
My name is Mary Minjer, and I live on Brom Drive for fifty years. In that time, many changes have occurred, most of them good, but this bike trail proposal for the drains is really outrageous. Since the council meeting on March nineteenth, a group of residents and myself attended a Macomb County Drain Commission meeting on April fourth with Candace Miller and members of her commission. At that time, Ms. Miller informed us the function of the drains was her main concern and gave us some background in the county's cost of maintaining the drains. One item was the cost of mowing the grass. She received a bid of six thousand dollars per cut, which she accepted, and the grass on the drains was cut three times during the summer of 2017, which is very satisfactory when it's cut. I feel the grass cutting on the drains is still a lot cheaper than six to eight million dollars to develop a bike trail when we already have sidewalks, which was mentioned, specifically built for that purpose in all subdivisions and on major streets. Aren't we being a bit redundant here? Council seems to have no respect for what the people don't want in their yards, especially those who live adjacent to the drain. Despite what Mayor Taylor says about the drains being valuable property and not being used to their full capacity, I beg to differ with that. Undeniably, the six-plus miles of drain, relief drains, do have a function. They are for extreme rainwater relief in the event of a catastrophic storm. The relief drain should be considered utilities, just like the Edison corridors. If you look at those pictures, that was from the other day when we had all that rain from the freezing rain. Furthermore, explain to me how a utility can be used twofold, as a park and as an emergency relief drain. This is certainly conflicting. Just watching the Weather Channel and viewing how other states have had terrible flooding through the years should make us grateful for the foresight of having these relief drains in place in a safe and secured manner. The council should also consider the city's liability in the event of an epic storm, which results in a drowning, a fatal accident, or a crime. Are the residents of Macomb County and Sterling Heights willing to dish out millions of dollars for any of these possibilities? Mayor Taylor is in favor of having bike trails and thought they would not harm anyone. In fact, he inferred they would police themselves with usage. And I've heard that before about police. That is not a logical thought, though, considering how crime and terrorism is everywhere. You can't put a cover over it. Just listen to the daily news. Right now, we are protected by ordinance thirty-five-three and by a six-foot-high fence which prohibits traffic or pedestrians from entering the drains. It just makes it easier for criminals to violate the law if those are removed. The real issue here is privacy, security, continual maintenance, and criminal activity. These must be seriously taken into consideration. I would like to remind the council again that the safety, cost of maintaining, enforcing, securing, and policing this project is exhaustive. Grant money only initiates the building of these trails. It does not help pay for their existence once they are here. Finally, a word about homeowners' investments and the future ability to sell their properties with these trails directly behind their yards. More than likely, most people wouldn't like the traffic they would create. It will definitely affect the sale of a property when a homeowner wants to sell. Consequently, property values of homes could be lower, and homeowners may experience a loss in revenue. The city could also take a loss in tax revenue. Do the math and tabulate the number of homes adjacent to the drains. In view of these facts, I am voting no on the linear park bike trail proposals since I believe it is not in the best interest of our residents and what they need or want. We already have enough parks. Let's work on the roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the middle portion?
Hi, I'm Jill Abresol. I live on Brom Drive. The reason I'm here, I kind of wanted to go with what Mr. Parker was saying. Behind our house, and we're behind Freedom Hill. There have been a lot of issues back there in the past, maybe because of Freedom Hill, maybe not. Most parks, you know, if this were to be considered some kind of park, which I agree with his definition, I don't think it could be really considered a park. I would say that a lot of the people that would go by during the day, because most parks are dawn to dusk, those people that would maybe engage in some kind of criminal activity, they could go by in the daytime and window shop your yard, see what maybe they could take advantage of, maybe see the best way into your house, come back later in the cover of darkness, and do what they will. And, you know, being a parent, you know, they can also see how many children you have, things like that, if you have a dog or not. Maybe they could see if you have surveillance, anything like that, take note of it. I notice when, sometimes when we have canvassers come through our neighborhood, all of a sudden, shortly after that, there's a big rash of crime. I actually caught a young man. One day, I was behind my car in the garage looking for something, and I saw a young man walk up who had some flyers in his hand. And instead of going to my front door and knocking on the door to see if I wanted to buy windows or whatever he was selling, instead, he stood there and took a good look around my garage, and I could see him through my car windows looking at everything. So, I know. And then shortly after that, there were cars broken into. My car's been broken into a couple of times. Our house actually was accessed by my garage door opener. A man came through my house. My dogs attached themselves to him, and he broke my back fence, getting over the fence into the ditch, and that's how he got away. The next day, when the police came to take a report, three other neighbors pulled up and said they also had been broken into or their cars broken into, and their garage doors openers also used to gain access to their homes. So, that's the main thing. You know, I think daytime would be shopping for this. Nighttime would be coming back to get the job done. To me, that's a valid point of not to have a park that really doesn't have any way to be policed. I never, you know, once in a while during, if there's the Fourth of July fireworks at Freedom Hill, I will see an officer drive by on an ATV, but that's probably the only time I've ever seen that. And I know that was, you know, because of the fireworks. Anyways, I just, I don't really think there's a way to police the area, and we, as the residents on the ditch, would be forced to be, to have to do that. We pretty much are now with the limited things that happen, you know, even occasionally. And to me, two or three residents a month getting broken into, that's too much. And after you report it, you never see a patrol car drive by after that because there's really nothing they can do about it. You know, they do it, they're gone. You know, nobody can get caught. Occasionally, someone will catch somebody on a surveillance camera. I know there have been a couple of people arrested during that. One of the people they arrested was actually one of the people I saw canvassing our neighborhood with flyers. A young man with a backpack on his back that somebody caught on a camera. Next thing you know, he was arrested. So, at least, at least we can police our own areas to a certain amount. But I really feel it's a very dangerous situation. As the mother of a special needs child, I feel like my child could be victimized by some of the people that could go by behind my house. Not everyone's going to be riding by on a bike. Some people are going to be walking through because we're behind Freedom Hill. Definitely turn into a tailgate party of people walking through to get to the concerts.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
All a lot of things to consider. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Dennis White, Sterling Heights. Several council beings ago, there was a discussion about a ropes course within Dodge Park. It's been closed for a month, and it's under reconstruction. Several of the council members were saying that they didn't think there would be much noise in regards to that, which there probably wouldn't be. And they further went on to say, if you want to hear noise, come by where I live because we're still having problems with the noise from Freedom Hill. During the Thursday night concerts during the summertime, I live about a mile away from Dodge Park. I could be in my basement, and I can still hear the sound from the concerts at Dodge Park on a Thursday night. So, I guess the bottom line is, I've got two questions. What is the decibel level that is allowed to come from the concerts? And who monitors the sound levels? With the new amphitheater being, going up, it may have better sound equipment. May be better, it may be worse. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone on my left? And nobody on my left. Okay, Mr. Smith, come on up. All right. Mr. Smith, would you like to speak under Communications?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No. My pleasure.
Let's talk about a little ten-year trend in spending in Sterling Heights. I got interested in this close to ten years ago when the city was trying to sell the 1.9-mill emergency tax increase. I'm trying to remember what they called that program, but basically, it was a scare tactic that, basically, if we don't get 1.9 mills, we're going to lay off a whole slew of police and fire. So, they put through 1.9 mills to save the decimation of police and fire. So, over the ten years, the spending on police and fire has gone up twenty-two percent. I guess, mission accomplished. Well, the total millage rate that we pay has gone up over nine mills. It's gone up twenty-five percent, and the total city spending has gone up fifty-four percent. So, I guess the, I guess they fixed the police and fire and then some, more than doubled the original complaint. Well, now, I look at parks and recreation spending, it's gone from 2.2 million to close to 6.6 million. So, it's, they've tripled park spending. Approached me a 200% increase in park spending. And I guess people come around and say, well, the roads are rough. We ought to fix the roads. And they've been taught to say, yeah, we need more police and fire. We don't know how many police and fire we got, but we need more. But I just don't see a train of people coming up here. We need to triple the park spending. I just, I just haven't heard that. This recreating recreation went through, close to one mill for twenty years. We look at the budget this year. They're bringing in 4.1 million on the parks' millage, and they still got two and a half million from general fund spending going into the parks. So, we're close to 6.6 million going into the parks. And we did really well. We had nice parks at 2.6 million, but now we got 6.6 million in the parks. We got this lengthy document that I downloaded from the city. I didn't make this up myself. I downloaded it from the city website. It's a detailed budget of parks, and it shows 45 million for capital and 24 million for expenses. It shows a total of 69 million in the budget. When you look at this year's, at this year's budget, we got 4.1 million coming in for this year alone. Times 20 is 82 million. So, you've overfunded the parks massively. If you bring in, if you look at projection of increased property values and new construction, this park millage is going to bring in 100 million in 20 years, which is 31 million more than what you've budgeted. So, yes, you can't, you can't touch the new parks' millage, but you can touch the two and a half million that's in the general fund that could and should be diverted to road repair. There's 31 million of excess funding in this parks that could and should and must be diverted into road fix-up. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jasmine Early, if you'd like to speak, come on up. I'm recognizing you, Mrs. Early. If you'd like to speak, okay. Then, you'll not speak tonight. Mr. Jefferson. If you'd like to speak, Mrs. Early, you may come up now. You do not get to decide when you're going to speak. I'm the chair of the meeting, and if you'd like to speak, come on up. No, I'm not changing the rules. Okay, then, that's fine. Mr. Jefferson, go ahead.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Glad to see the red shirts back. It's probably been sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years since they've been down here. Some of them new. Some of them really old. Not really old, but older. They've been experienced in coming down here. But at this point, I would like to refer everybody back to the first meeting of January 2018. Bridget Kozlowski threw this current city council under the bus when she showed a clip of an old city council when they had enough. They had enough. They got up off their seats. They went out and protested to get Van Dyke widened. The reason I say this is people that, with the drains, the people with the taxes, they're new to dealing with this particular city council here. And I would like to explain, go over a few things that they're going to have to deal with when dealing with this. when dealing with this city council. First of all, we got Mayor Taylor who led us into a lawsuit himself. It was nobody else, it was him. And this was a discrimination lawsuit that was found out by the Department of Justice. And we settled that lawsuit in order to save money. I don't know how that conversation came down, but it came down to us saying we discriminated against a bunch of people in order to save money. Master Taylor also has a really good friend, that would be Master Garoppolo. Master Garoppolo right here in this one says that we are not all created equally, so we should not all be treated fairly. I do not know how he can keep, you wanna laugh, that's right here, buddy. How that, how he stands up here and keeps being on the planning commission and the certainty. Master Garoppolo felt so, so comfortable, he went off and he brought up that people here, they come up here to this here mic, they ought to be hogtied, lynched and killed. And that's funny. That was funny. Can we get some kind of, hey, stop talking or something? So, we went to that. I don't know how you people can sit up here and say it's disgusting and I say a thing. You didn't say anything, you haven't said nothing, ever. Now, I want people to go back to the last meeting. You folks in this drain situation went out in the snow cold March, got signatures. You went out in cold April, snowy April, got signatures because the drain situation was very important to you. But yet Clown Shannon over there got up and said, he couldn't come knock on your doors because it wasn't that important to you until the weather broke. He said it. So this is what you folks is dealing with. A do nothing, say nothing, come collect their check, discrimination by the city council. So in order for you to go get this, this drain done, you guys are gonna have to rise up above these people because they ain't looking out for you. They only in it for their own interest. So, rise up people, get above them or not, they will not help you. They are supposed to be our voice to the county, to our state, but no, they putting it on you to do it, not them. And that's what they get paid to do, but they want us to do it. So, rise up folks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Sir, with the MacBook, do you want to speak? Thomas, please stop interrupting from the audience. Charles, please sit down.
He was interrupting today.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Oh, thank you, thank you for hearing me tonight. Thank you, council. And I'd like to thank Candace Miller too for being so open and being willing to hear us residents about the drain situation. I'm a newer resident to Sterling Heights, I moved in in 2012, but I've been a lifelong Macomb County resident, I grew up here. I love the area and that's why I eventually came back with my family and chose to move into Sterling Heights. And I'll tell you where my house is, on Dixon, I love the neighborhood, I love the house. And one of the things I loved about the house the most, my house sat vacant, or not vacant, but it sat on the market for 180 days before we bought it in 2012. One of the reasons why my wife and I bought it is because of the drain, there's nothing back there, the, the open area and the privacy was really important to us. And it became more important to us later on, after the birth of our son, who is now five years old and was diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. I am a child psychologist and board certified behavior analyst, so for those of you who don't know what autism is, it's a social communication disorder, it's a social interaction disorder. And my biggest concern is that with the park back there, something bad might happen to him. If there's, if, if we're looking for a solution though, to make that, that land useful, and I agree with, with my fellow residents behind me on 16 Mile, I think it's, it's a great idea to connect Troy and the rest of the path together and make it one. And I can tell you, I used to ride that path and I still try to all the time, it's harder with small kids, but I love to do that. Really close, it's great. But I think before we really push into the park, I think maybe making sure that we explore every option, to make that land as valuable as possible is, is something really important. And, and my thought would be to visit with residents and get some feelers out to see what the ideas would be about extending the lot lines. One of the points that was brought up before was, at least in our group, was that maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of about 75% of folks that, that live along the drain are already going out there and cutting the grass anyways. Extending the lot lines reduces that burden to the county, to the city, and it also provides an opportunity to generate some long-term stable revenue that, let's face it, a grant won't do. Grants, ultimately, they're great, but they run out and then you have to supplant that income somewhere else. Knowing that, having written grants myself, they, they, they don't last forever. So if, if it came down to it, I, I would say that I'm in support of moving lot lines first before the park is put back there. I know I'm running short on time, so I'm just gonna finish up and say thank you again very much for listening to me and hearing what I have to say and I really appreciate your time tonight and I hope you'll consider what I've had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left? If not, all right, I'll move to the center, take you ma'am in the back.
Good evening, council. My name is Carrie Cribs, resident of Sterling Heights for about 15 years now. I just want to point out that everybody wearing red is opposed to the drain redevelopment. So for those who don't want to speak or we don't want to be redundant, we can show you visibly how many people are here against that. I first would like to thank all the council members who acknowledged my correspondence with a reply and demonstrated professional courtesy. Councilwoman Zarco, Councilwoman Schmidt and Councilwoman Shannon, thank you for getting back to me and just responding that you even got my emails. Excuse me. I am however disappointed in how dismissive Mayor Taylor and Mr. Radke are to the concerns of the residents opposed to the redevelopment of the drain, specifically on social media. You've openly mocked our concerns as well as posting disrespectful comments concerning one of our volunteers. I, I believe this to be unprofessional behavior and not becoming of public officers. Mayor Taylor, at the last city council meeting, I found your dialogue about the drain flippant to the concerns of our constituents. As our elected civil servant, we would hope you would put our concerns ahead of your opinion. Your sermon describing the tranquil childhood growing up on cul-de-sac with a private park in your backyard 25 years ago is no comparison to what we're going through right now. I too grew up in Shelby Township with a park in my backyard. Unfortunately, it was not privately owned, that only my neighbors and I can use. It was a public park, Stony Creek. My residence was situated at the beginning of a bike path. Moving in, it only took a few days to see the downside of living next to a park. We dealt with our street and driveways constantly inundated with people parking to avoid park entry fees. It took several years with the city to make a no trespassing and unlawful parking ordinance. And the drawbacks did not end there. There had been robberies, pet waste, litter, human excrement, vandalism, bikes disappeared off our front porches during the middle of the day, our lawn furniture and grills were stolen. Also, non-motorized pathways are often and still often frequented by ATVs, dirt bikes and other motorbikes. All of this and we weren't even directly on the path, we were just near it. Also, in your talk, I found it mildly disturbing that you openly admitted to peering into people's backyards and homes while using the Clinton River trails and even taking pictures. This is exactly what the residents of the drain do not want. Strangers peering into their yards, homes and lives. No matter how selfish it may sound, yes, we value our privacy and we want to keep it. You also stated that turning the bike path corridor will not promote crime, but prevent it. But crime does not happen when there are people around. What creeps, keeps the crime down and the criminals at bay is the seven-foot fences that are there under the drain. No, these fences do not keep out everyone, but yes, they definitely are a deterrent. Take down these fences and you remove that deterrent. Next comes the drowning safety. The past rainfall, we've had over 10 foot deep of runoff in the drain. A current in this makeshift flood river is strong enough to carry off a child. Open up these areas will create an access to these floodwaters and currents. It won't be an instance of if a drowning occurs, but when? And what would that reaction be to the drowning? Probably put up a fence around the drain. And who would pay for the lawsuit that ensues? Sterling Heights? Macomb County? Ultimately, it would be the taxpayers. Since you've placed a burden of proof on those who are opposed to the drain redevelopment, I provided over 20 cases in the US where both children and adults have drowned in storm
Good evening, mayor, city council and audience. I'm here again on behalf of our city and county residents to ask you to say no to the pedestrian path or park project by the Sterling relief drain that was presented on February 9, February 6. On April 9, we spoke, as others stated before, with Mrs. Candace Miller. And in that Macomb Drainage Board meeting, that I'm hoping that all of you watch at the Facebook page, No New Park. Please go there and watch it if you haven't. In that video, you can see that she stated that her job is to make sure that the drain works. The park project is the city's council decision. Yesterday, Mr. John Rhea from the Macomb County Department of Planning and Economic Development had a long conversation with me. He stated, quote, "Before we take any step along the corridor, we will hope and seek to get city's councils approval. So even though your city council traditionally doesn't have any say on this, we are not going to move forward unless we have the support of your council," et cetera, he went on. Mr. Rhea reminded me that he worked for me and for the county residents. I'm here to remind you that you work for me and for the rest of the residents in Sterling Heights. We don't appreciate the diminishing comments in the Sterling Heights local politics Facebook page, who we had here sitting, the person who made those comments, one of them. You all know that the only way to prove us that you are in our side is to make an official document such an ordinance to regulate the use of the land by the relief drain as solely a relief drain, no park. You sent us to talk to the county officials. We didn't. They say it is your decision and the residents. The county officials are sending us to you. It is time to stop the back and forth. We have more and more signatures and we hope that you give us a response today. We can't be dilating this issue and allowing Mr. Radke to slander me in the Sterling Heights local page or the unwelcoming comments that the mayor is making. Please be sensitive to the need of the residents that you represent. We have given you safety, privacy among other issues or other reasons why this project is not in the best interest of the residents. The initial cost of sits to eight millions should concern our residents. This cost will not stop there. Always, although the grant money may be coming if the county is able to acquire it, it is for parks and cannot be allocated for anything. I don't understand why the county doesn't spend resources and time getting grant money to fix the roads. That is what you should be focusing on. Infrastructure should be a priority. Fix the roads, say no to the relief park drain. We can't be playing any more games with this. We need, you need to say no. Each one of you needs to say no, if you really care about us. I want to invite the residents to go to the petition, say no to a Sterling relief drain conversion. And also visit the Facebook page. No New Park. Thank you for your time.
Once again, good evening. And I, I would like to talk about one simple thing, as I noted earlier, about Mr. Vanderpoel and Mr. Taylor who were up on the news talking about roads and a no road millage. I'm wondering, how many road millages are we going to have? We have one currently, with roads, police and fire that's in current service. In fact, this was talked about the beginning of the year when they talked about the, the plan for the city. In that plan, they also talked about, well, that plan, that millage is running out, so we need a new plan. And that you, Mr. Vanderpoel, said that you would push for a renewal of that plan. Yet, so that's two road millages. And now the third road millage, you're saying there has to be the supposed one-time-only road millage. You were saying that we need more road mills, because as you, I believe, well, you said that Sterling Heights, it looks like a third world city. So apparently that's three, I count, unless there's something wrong with my math, that's three road millages. So I'm wondering, why do we need three road millages to fix our roads when there's not enough, enough roads to fix Shainer? There's not even enough money. And it's amazing that we are gonna spend $8 million. I'm not completely against the road, the drain issue, but I am against that we're spending $8 million for a bike path when we don't, when even, when this county doesn't even have that money to fix Shainer. And they said there would be about, you know, eight, 10 million. And apparently they don't even have the whole four million because the city has to supplement that cost as well. And another issue that we have is, we have, I've been talking about this for, gosh, this will be the third year, Ascot Drive, which is in absolutely horrible shape. I talked to a city engineer, he agreed with me, and I talked about a section of it. He said, well, the whole road needs to be replaced. I said, true, but the section I'm talking about now, you have a bump. It's basically like a speed bump, where you have, the road is caving in and sinking so much that the rest of the concrete is lifting up and basically causing, if you go in one direction, it's a speed bump, basically. I haven't gone out and measured it, but it's gotta be at least three or four inches higher than the rest of the road. And so apparently we can't fix that, but we can do all these other things. And when we're talking about all these projects that we want to do and about all these millages, why not have a millage that actually makes sense? Why does it have to be across the board? We don't do across the board for all these companies. We give all these exemptions and all these abatements to all these companies, some of them are in millions of dollars over several years. Why not have something similar to that with the residents? If, I think it would be more appealing to some of the residents if we had, say, if you are a city senior citizen, if you are a, if you live, if you have a low-income area, if you are on social security disability, if you're on, you know, if you're on something where you're getting assistance, that you should not have to pay the full, this is not apply to me, but you should not have to pay the full minutes. Right now, you could be a senior citizen, you could be on disability and you have to pay the full rate for your property taxes. Doesn't seem quite fair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Neal. Anyone else? Take you, sir.
Hi, my name is Victor Kunitovich, I live on Broome Drive. I came here once and explained my feelings about opening up the drain, about fires. Okay, you said you had nothing to do with it to go talk to Candace Miller. I went and talked to Candace Miller and she says, no matter if it was a park or a bike path, she was still not gonna cut the sides and the bottom of the ditch. That that was gonna be a wild, I mean, an animal sanctuary. Animals are smarter than us. They don't live in a flood- They don't live in a flood-prone area. And by opening it up to the public, that area to the public, you are increasing the dangers of fires. And when you do open it up to the public, ask yourself, who is the public? Men, women, children, law-abiding citizens? Yeah. What I call spotters, looking for robbers that are looking for easy prey, for easy robberies? And the most important thing is, would you guys, women and men and ladies, would you want pedophiles walking around in your backyard looking at your kids? And we know we have quite a few in Sterling Heights. So this is my concern, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Elias.
Good evening, Senator Elias. Nice to see you again, Mayor Taylor and Council. I do hope you take these concerns seriously. These are your residents. These are people who have legitimate concerns, and you, as a council, should be actually listening and hearing them out. I'd like to know the real reasons why you wish to go forward over their objections. They provided very many, many good reasons, from privacy to safety to concerns to monetary. What is the reason that you guys are so pushing forward against all these lovely people out here, who are affected, directly affected? If you represent the people, guys, take a stand. I'm so tired of you not doing this. Every time people come and make their concerns, you can't label these people haters or any other ways. These are concerned citizens who care, who've been residents here, who care about their home. What are the priorities for this park? I don't see the reasons. I don't see any strong, legitimate reasons that you're pushing forward. There has to be an ulterior motive. What is it? Could you please direct us? Because these people do not need another park. They don't need their homes invaded by other people walking through there. There's so many areas that they mentioned, and I can't believe that you could not waive and put their consideration first over whatever your interests are. You are supposed to represent them. I've not seen a council represent the people unless we come back with a referendum. They have over three hundred to four hundred signatures. That is a concern. Not many people come out here to speak up unless there is a lot of people that are also favoring it. Each person that's coming out may represent five or ten. You guys are not considering their vote. You're not considering their concern. And it is not fair, because as a council, your whole purpose is to represent the people and to put their objection, their objections, their concerns over yours. And I'm not so sure that the pros for the spending of, for this linear park, the money entailed, is not wasteful and unnecessary, the same way you spent over a million dollars on decorating our medians. What a wasteful way of spending money over the objections of concerned citizens. Again, you represent the people, and I don't see that happening here in many cases. I've come to this council many times before, and I see that you guys pretend to listen, but in the back of your heads, you're going, I got the votes. I'm not interested. I'm sorry to hear that, but I'd really love to see you act accordingly to the best interests of your citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Elias. Good luck with the next. Mr. Garretson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Vanderpoel, I'm kind of the other side of the Sterling Relief Drain issue. I'm here as a private resident, as somebody who lives within a half-mile of the drain, who would use it if it was turned into a linear park. As I serve on the Sterling Heights Planning Commission, I have seen a lot of proposals come before me in terms of ways to use land in the city. And you get to, you develop a sense for what's a good idea and what's a bad idea. I think that this idea is a slam dunk, honestly. And I was so convinced that it would be seen that way that I didn't even bother to advocate for it. And now I see where that's become necessary, so here I am tonight. I'm sorry I'm coming late to my, to this party, but, you know, in the last thirty-six hours, I've gotten as many petition signatures in favor of this as these folks have gotten in weeks. There is a huge constituency among the residents of Sterling Heights who are in favor of this proposal, who think that this would enhance their lives, who think that this would enhance-
Mr. Jefferson?
He interrupted me.
He did not interrupt you.
Yeah, he said he was in favor of this.
Okay, well, pause this time. If you're going to interrupt him, you can do it from the audience. You can do it from the comfort of your own home, watching on TV. You can stand up. You know, you can call me master. You can call Nate Shannon master. That's your shtick. You do it at every meeting. You call him master. You do it at every meeting. We put up with it. We tolerate it. Stop talking, Mr. Jefferson. If you'd like to, if you would like, Mr. Neal, for goodness sake, do you see, does anyone in the audience here see what's going on? Sixteen people have spoken. Fifteen people spoke without interruption. Mr. Garretson comes up, and within a minute of his talking, you're catcalling him, and you're yelling at him, and you're interrupting him. Afford him the same respect that he afforded all of you. Now, if you're going to keep interrupting from the audience, we're going to call recess, and we'll go into recess until the audience calms down. And if you don't calm down, we'll have you removed. It's as simple as that. Be respectful, okay? You don't have to, you do not have to agree with him. Just respect his, the respect that he has the floor. Mr. Garretson, please continue.
Thank you. So I just want to give you a quick overview. What I showed earlier is a link to the petition that I'm talking about. The petition reads this way. "We, the undersigned residents of Sterling Heights, Michigan, feel our voices were not heard in support of the Sterling Relief Drain Linear Park Project. We believe this project fits in perfectly with the Sterling Heights Recreating Recreation Initiative. While we can certainly understand that the residents whose property back up to the drain have concerns, we feel the project has tremendous merit for recreation in Sterling Heights, will raise property values, and should be built." Yes, build the project. And that's my simple message. You're only hearing one side of the story from the people who have come tonight. There are two sides to the story. There is a lot of support for this project. I hope that you bear that in mind. I'm going to take the results of my petition to Commissioner Miller, and I am going to present them to you as well. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Garretson. Anyone else like to speak? All right, Mr. Neal, you are out of order. Mr. Neal, you cannot make attacks on people. You can't call people racist. This is, you know, do you know how much damage you do to your cause when you talk like that? I wish you understood. We're going to have no more interruptions from the audience. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, we'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything to add tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kaschubski?
We do have one item tonight.
Council, anyone who'd like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Mr. Radke?
I'll go, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd like to respond a bit to the folks here in the room and folks at home about the relief drain imaginary project at this point, but hopefully, it will come to fruition. You know, I was on the fence about this project. I really had some concerns. They haven't all been alleviated as of yet, but just to kind of, I made a little laundry of those people who are talking here, so we'll go through some of them, maybe have, you know, some thoughts on it. No, I live about a half-mile from the drain. I live fifteen-mile on Van Dyke. So this would be a tremendous amenity for people like me who run or bike in the city. I think it'd be a nice little pathway through the city that you don't have to dodge cars or exhaust. Cars would be coming out of driveways. I can't say how many times I've almost been run over by cars while running in the city. Happens to me quite often. People aren't watching. People aren't paying attention. This would also be a tremendous amenity for families. We keep on talking about trying to bring back families of Sterling Heights, bringing the new generation of residents. I think they'd use this path, you know, to take their kids through the city, to take them up, you know. One of the things I ran on when I ran for office was creating a southern park. There's no parks in my neighborhood. We've complained about this for years. We've talked about it. And this would be a tremendous amenity for them. So, you know, this started off not in your backyard. We're talking about public county land here. This isn't someone's backyard. This is property owned by all the people of the county, people in Sterling Heights. You know, I have, looking at, you know, maps online, people do use this as their personal property, but it's not. They're encroaching upon the, upon the county land. And it's just, you know, it seems like it's an idea that you can use it, but if a broader community wants to use it, that's terrible. You know, and then it goes on to the loitering ordinance. If you are in the county drain behind your property, you are, you are basically trespassing. So you say that people should be arrested for being back there, but you're back there. Doesn't make much sense. You know, there was a resident who, who sent me a question about the Macomb Orchard Trail. We have a piece of it in our city. They asked Chief Tojikowski, how much crime is reported on that trail? I asked the chief to prepare a report with crime statistics about the trail. He has not completed the report, but he said just from his initial query, there is no increase in crime. There's actually no crime reported on the trail. It hasn't become a problem. It is not a problem. That was one of my initial concerns when discussing the trail or the linear park, whatever we're calling it right now, of increased crime. And I think it has to be patrolled. I think it is a concern. But at the same time, you know, the Sterling Heights Relief Drain does serve a purpose. It serves the purpose of protecting the community from flooding and homes. We have the Clinton River in our city, too. People are concerned about drowning in the drain. And I guess I'd ask for the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. How many people drown in Sterling Heights in the Clinton River every year? Mr. Vanderpoel, if you know.
Mayor, Councilmember Radke, we haven't had any drownings, and I'm aware of it in my tenure.
It's what I suspected, you know. A bank is a bank. I don't even know of any children who've fallen in, but I'm sure they do from time to time. That's a concern. We have to be prepared for that. But at the same time, I think we're creating or conjuring up boogeymen.
Harry. I just don't know how many times you guys have to be told. I mean, do you just not care? You don't care about the rules? You don't care about respect? You say respect is a two-way street. I mean, we sit here and we listen to what you have to say. We afford you the respect of coming up to the podium and talking, and you can't do the same thing. So if you'd like to walk out, that's fine. We'll give you a moment to walk out, and then Mr. Radke can continue his comments. We'll just wait a moment, Mr. Radke.
No problem, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're not going to get any- All right, Mr. Radke, if you'd like to continue, go ahead. Where was I? Go ahead. Mr. Jeff, Officer, can you come ask Mr. Jefferson to leave? He's been called out of order on numerous occasions. I just, I mean, I'm, what are we going to do? Let you take over the meeting?
That's all right. Relax. Relax.
Okay. Officer, please, please go back. Officer, you can go back. Officers, you can go back. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. All right. Mr. Radke. All right, you know, we're going to take a recess. Second order, Mr. Radke, you had the floor. You may continue.
Yeah. So to continue what I was saying about the drain, I think an eight-million-dollar improvement will raise property values in the drain and in the city in general. That could be a wonderful amenity. I think that it's hard to argue that if we got an eight-million-dollar grant for a drain, that property values wouldn't rise up. We're essentially putting more money in. You know, this argument about privacy, I take it seriously. I don't want anyone to feel like their privacy is being violated. I don't want anyone to feel like their privacy is being violated. But we have plenty of homes in the city that are on corner lots, for example, where people can walk by and look into your backyard. Some residents solve this problem by erecting privacy fences, so you can't go in and stare at them. You know, I spoke to Candace Miller, and I spoke to John Paul Rhea's offices, tried to talk to him about this project, and they basically said that they are, one, first, going to improve the drain, because right now it's in unacceptable condition, and, two, push forward for funding for this, because this is not going to happen without funding. I don't want to spend tax dollars on creating basically a county amenity. But I think the idea that we're putting the cart before the horse here is very apt. We're arguing about a project that has not been planned, has not been plotted, that has not been decided, and we're essentially going to strangle it in its infancy because some members of the community aren't happy that they do not get to use free county land any further. With that, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, is there anyone else? Mrs. Saroski?
Mr. Mayor, I know, and it's unfortunate that some of the residents who are so against this drain have left because they haven't given voice to the people that may be on their side, or actually, we listen to them, and we would love you to listen to us. You want our opinion, you want us to support you, so please, they're going to have to watch this on video to see what we're going to say, at least what I'm going to say. And number one, as Mrs. Elias said, I am here to represent the city with the people of the city. I was elected. I lost time at work and spent time away from my family so that I can do this. The money is nice, but it's not about the money. And so we are here to represent... I am here to represent the residents, and I want to let you know that I'm very disturbed that you spent your time and your efforts, the residents that live on this drain, to go to Candace Miller. I have a lot of respect for the woman. I have known her many years, long before politics were involved, when our husbands were at the base together. But she has misled those residents when she is telling them that it's up to City Council to do anything about this drain. We are more than happy, at least I know that I am, and I'm going to ask to put forth a referendum to prevent this drain from... the drain development from going forward. One, tree roots in a drain. If you've ever had a tree root in your front yard, you know what happens when it gets into a water system? That's not practical use of the property. And then, yes, safety is an issue, but for her, she said, who came to this council and proposed this herself to us as this was a county project, that she was just letting us as a courtesy now, and then to flip-flop it around as soon as the residents came to her and said they didn't want it, that it was somehow county's idea that we were pushing it, ludicrous and not correct. And I do respect Candace, but I'm calling a spade a spade. I disagree with Mr. Radke. I don't think we should have this out here. I grew up in Grand Ledge, where there was a huge river and lots of tributaries. Rivers are one thing. People know what a river is. It is a consistent waterway. Yes, it may flood a little bit, it may go down, but it's consistent. A drain, there are days and there are times in the summer where that stuff, that grass is as dry as straw, and it's not consistent, so it's not safe to have some days it's going to be full. It was full. I went right by it on Sunday. Full to the top. Not safe if there was a resident... A child who decided to go biking. My kids were falling off their bikes all the time. Heaven forbid one would fall in. So I understand that there are some ideas to try to prevent... Thank you for coming back, Ms. Krebs. If you'd like to stay, we are still talking, and you might even find it helpful. But, and I apologize for not getting back to you. I was in Mexico. So with teenagers, not my idea of a great time. But anyway, so to continue, I don't... I understand that we're trying to... that some of the council people may be trying to improve... Work with what we've got to improve the city as best we can. Grant money might be used, but it's still a grant money, and we still have to maintain it. So I am completely against this. I'm going to ask my council members to consider putting forth that resolution and getting it off, and if we have to vote on it, great, we'll do it at the next agenda, but that's what I would like to do. I don't appreciate, however, being said, you guys always stand together and don't listen to the citizens, because we do, and we spend a lot of time at it. So please, we listen, and we're happy to listen to you, and I want you to listen, you know, understand that we're trying as best we can to represent you. So thank you.
All right, Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I have a few comments. Actually, first, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool or Mr. Kachubski, whoever wants to take this. It's my understanding that we received correspondence from either Candace Miller's office or John Paul Rhea's office, that the intention of Candace Miller is to improve the drain only and will not be considering park amenities as part of a multi-year drain improvement. Is that correspondence that you understand to be true?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, we have not received any sort of formal written communication. What we have received is verbal feedback. I have personally spoken with Commissioner Miller. I know others have as well. The intent is Commissioner Miller, as has been stated, she wants to focus on the drain improvements themselves. That's her focus. So in other words, she wants to proceed with the EPA grant that the county... that her office has obtained. So that's involving some of the daylighting and some of the general improvements of the infrastructure. The park improvement is something that she feels that the county itself, JP, John Paul Rhea is the Economic Planning Director, that his office, along with the county executives, should be pursuing on behalf of the county. So she has kind of bifurcated or separated the two issues. The improvement she's pursuing, the other park amenities, if you will, is something that she feels that the county itself, on a broader scale, should be handling. And whether or not the county proceeds with that is completely unknown at this point in time. What the county has said to me, John Paul Rhea, is that the park improvements itself is something that they might consider in the future if grant funding came available, but it was not something that they were going to actively pursue at this time. I emphasize "at this time." So, you know, that could be six months, it could be a year, it could be five years. The reality is, though, even if the county did get some form of grant funding for the park improvements, remember, this is grant funding that they're talking about, not funding that can be used for any other purpose if they were able to obtain it. For example, a grant from the Michigan Land Trust or the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, those grants take sometimes years to get, then takes a couple of years to go through the planning process, and then another year or two to construct. You'd be talking about years, even if they got the grant tomorrow, before this could possibly even be implemented. By then, there would be a lot of public information put forth and so on. I think it probably would be good for the county to have a public forum to explain exactly what's going on, exactly what's going to go on with the public drain improvements. The community needs to know. Clearly, everyone here tonight needs to know. In addition, they can explain exactly what their intent is then with the global plan, if you will, to park amenities. This is not the only greenway in the county. There are other unimproved greenways that the county is interested as well, integrating in along with the Sterling Relief Drain. And talk about what sort of collaboration they feel is required with the local communities, including Sterling Heights. So that's what I know so far. That's what they've communicated to me directly, and I believe to some extent the mayor as well, and maybe others. But we do not have anything formal in writing that I can share with the City Council or with the residents.
Okay. I have to agree with Mrs. Saroski. I think Commissioner Miller is, you know, passing the buck to us, so to speak. You know, one of the speakers came up and said, "We're tired of this back and forth." Well, we don't even have a dog in the show. It's not our property. So it is their property, and why she keeps telling you that we are pursuing it and we are voting on it, it's their property. Another resident said, you know, "Why is counsel pushing for this?" Well, I can only speak for myself. I have not pushed one iota for this because I have a lot of concerns about it. And I'm not sure if... Who on council has? I've not had conversations with anyone on council about this. So I am not pushing for it. I think, you know, time to stop the back and forth is absolutely true. And for Commissioner Miller to keep pushing you back to, "You need to tell City Council that if they don't want this done, they need to do something about it," it's their project. We're not applying for the grants. They're applying for the grants. So it really is in their hands. And, you know, as far as this may not happen for 10 years, so be it, but it doesn't really need to happen at all. The main purpose of that property is for drainage. And, you know, another speaker said, "Infrastructure should be our priority and the county's priority." Absolutely. And to think that they're worried about a park grant right now, when we can't even pay and maintain the roads and infrastructure, to me, is a little ridiculous. We need to put these priorities in line and stick to the commitment of helping our residents in... with these potholes in failing infrastructure. Infrastructures that hadn't been inspected when we were told they were inspected. Let's do that job first. You know, as you can tell, I'm not really in favor of this park going through. I think that the residents have very valid concerns, along with people that would just utilize or their kids would utilize those parks in, you know, after a rainy day, and those currents are swift. And kids, let's face it, they think they're invincible. They think they're invincible. So that's my soapbox on that. I do have a couple of other issues. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, with all the road construction discussion, someone had brought up to me the possibility, or I couldn't think of if it had been mentioned, 19 mile between Shaner and Clinton River. Is that on the radar at all?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, don't quote me on this. It is in our five-year plan, but I just don't recall the year now. It's not next year. I know that. But I'll have to circle back with you. I'm pretty certain it's in the five-year plan, but I have to double-check it.
Okay. And could we maybe reevaluate that stretch of road?
You mean by way of accelerating it?
Possibly. Just evaluate the condition and see if it should be accelerated.
And let me just add something to the discussion, because I think it's relevant. With the one-time, one-mil proposal that's in the proposed budget that City Council will be considering and voting on on May 1st, that approval of that does allow us to then accelerate projects or move projects into the plan that are currently not there as well. So that could have a direct impact on the roadway you're talking about, but I will get back to you and the rest of the City Council.
Okay. And then just one last thing. A resident had also brought this up to me. When emailing counsel off the city website, would it be possible to have one, you know, an option for them to click on Contact All of Counsel instead of individually putting in our names to contact?
Councilwoman Schmidt, sounds like a very reasonable request. I'll talk to our IT experts and also our Community Relations Director and see if we can make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Kozci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mayor Protona Saroski and Councilwoman Schmidt in regard to a resolution as to council's feelings on this. Can you start out by saying, "I live on what I call a retention pond relief." And one morning, I woke up at 2:00 in the morning, looked out the bedroom window, and I saw these two lights in the bottom of the pond. Couldn't figure out what it was. Took another look. It was a car. He missed the turn. Coming off of 17 Mile, he didn't turn. Went right through the wire fence into the bottom of the pond. The pond was a little mucky, and he couldn't drive out. So being the nice person that I am, I called 911 to say, "There's a vehicle in the pond. The lights are still on, and I don't know if he's okay or not, or she." And I hung up. They called back and said, "Is there water in the pond?" Because this is quite deep, and of course, it's a relief drain. So when we have a large rain, it fills right to the top because there's two drains that feed into it. And it is very, very deep. But thankfully, there was no water, and it took them a few hours to pull him out, but he went right through the wire fence. So your drain, your Sterling Relief Drain, serves a purpose. That purpose is to take the water away from those homes so that they don't flood. Those fences are up there to keep vehicles out of that drain because it is not safe. And somebody that isn't paying attention, sloppy roads, what have you, they could go right through that wire fence, and if there's water in that drain, they've got a problem. So I believe that the drain is there for a purpose because Sterling Heights is on a clay base. And because it's on a clay base, we need to move that water so it doesn't destroy people's property. Bike path. A gentleman this evening had the right idea in regard to the bike path, and if I remember correctly, that was the original intent. It went from Freedom Hill all the way over into Troy on Metropolitan Parkway. So if you want a bike path from one side of the state to the other, then keep it straight. Don't start zigzagging and then worrying about how you're going to cross major roads in the half-mile, because that's not where you want to send people, especially people on bikes and with their children. That is county property. They have a duty to cut it, to maintain it, to keep it properly fenced, and I hope that that's what they do. Bike paths should be on the bike path. We already have the Clinton River Bike Path and the projected 16-mile road. So I think we should continue on the way we are. I do not support a park on the relief drain or on the Edison Corridor, either one. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kozci. Mrs. Zarco.
Okay. First of all, what bothers me more about this than anything, it's dividing the city and its residents and its neighbors, one against the other. That bothers me more than anything. Secondly, is I am tired of this being a hot potato issue between the Planning Commission of Macomb County, Drain Commission, Commissioner Miller, and the City Council. We have no jurisdiction over that drain. That is a county drain. They maintain it. The only time that I know that the city has cut that drain is if one of us has called to say it hasn't been done properly, and then our guys will go out there and trim or whatever they have to do, and we build a county. So that's the only time that I know that we've ever maintained that drain. I've lived within probably 500 feet of that drain for 40 years. I know what happens when it rains, and I know the pictures that Mrs. Minjow brought today are not an exaggeration. In fact, that was one of the lower levels that she brought here, because if it had rained for two days, it would have definitely been up to the top. So I understand what she's saying. Now, we, right now, are putting $44 million into our recreation program that all of you voted on. Do we really need this right now? I would say no. But before we go... Before I tell you, this resolution sounds like a great idea, but I want residents to know, a resolution is a letter of good intent. It is not legal and binding. So we could do that and say that we don't want this, but I want you also to understand it is not a legal and binding agreement. They could disregard it. It could end up in the garbage, and you'd still have some kind of bike path back there. It could end up in the garbage, and you'd still have some kind of bike path back there. So, that's, I want you to be aware of this. I walk all the time. So, if this was, you know, a park of some kind or a bike path, I probably would walk it. But my biggest concern was how it was going to affect the people that abutted this, the drain. And it's still one of my concerns. And to me, I can find another place to walk, I can find another place to ride my bike, and I can be out of somebody's backyard and know that they are still going to have the peace and quiet that they had before, and just have to worry about the maintenance of the drain. So, I understand that. From the very beginning, these plans did not, they just didn't sit well with me because of the zigzagging across the city. I couldn't see, like, if you went into Dodge Park, you could go for miles and miles without, you know, crossing a street. That's not the case here. And, you know, I've thought this through, and, I mean, it's chunked up, is what I want to say. At first, I thought, well, maybe if, you know, this would just be like a private park for people that live between Dodge Park and Shaner, and really, just the people that lived on the drain would be able to participate in the amenities that this park might bring. But that isn't going to happen, because it's public land. So, you know, you can think that, that, you know, those are the only people that are going to be using it, but that's really not what could happen. So, I'm going to agree with the other councilwomen that have spoken this evening, and I'll go along with the resolution, as long as you know that it's not legal and binding. And, you know, so that's, if it helps you, but I'm going to tell you right now, it doesn't mean it's over. We brought up the idea of public forums. If there's a public forum, I want it to be on county property without city staff, because this is a county project, and that's the way I think it should be done. So, wherever they decide to do it, it should be county staff and on county property. But I think that's pretty much all I have to say on the drain. Oh, I know. I'm in 500 feet of the drain one way and 500 feet of the red run. You know, one is the overflow. And when we first moved there 40 years ago, we had to have flood insurance. So, over the years, when they found out that, you know, we don't have to have flood insurance anymore, but I do remember the days when we had to have flood insurance there. So, that's all I do have to say about the drain. Now, I have two questions that I have through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. If we could explain both here at the meeting and on the website, with all of the construction that's going on in the city, the policy for emergency vehicles, because there is nowhere to turn, and the other day, when Shaner had both northbound lanes closed, and they were using the turn lane to go northbound, and there was a police car trying to get by, there was no place. So, if we could explain how, you know, people move for emergency vehicles, that would be helpful. And the other thing, as we talk about this mill that we want for roads, which, to me, is the most important thing I have to worry about right now, is passing that and making sure everybody's happy with it. So, that is my priority. That's my fight right now, is that mill, to get the roads fixed. However, if the other jurisdictions that are a part of fixing these roads don't have the money, what happens to the money that we are collecting, and how do we move forward as far as getting the other jurisdictions to improve those roads? So, those are my questions.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, first on the emergency vehicles. I meant to report on this at the last city council meeting. The rule of thumb is in construction zones, if you see an emergency vehicle approaching you in either direction, frankly, you're supposed to get over to the right as quickly as possible. If you cannot get over to the right, you are supposed to stop and let the emergency vehicle figure out how they're going to get around you. So, first, pull over to the right if you can. If you cannot get over to the right, most times you can, then stop and let the emergency vehicle figure it out. That's the rule of thumb. So, we can post something on our website and social media as well. I think that might help. With respect to the millage, you raise a good question in terms of what happens if the other entities that are involved, namely, the state, federal government, and county, do not come through with the potential funding. It is a risk, but a very low risk. For example, of all the projects that would be funded under the one-mill, there is only one project that involves the federal government and the county, and that's Shaner, the second phase of Shaner, which would be done next spring, and that would be from Plum Brook up to 19 Mile Road. We already have a commitment from the county that that project would be accelerated. It's in the plan for the prior year, so we're accelerating it up a year, which then allows us, as I mentioned earlier, to bring some other road projects into the plan. But I'm very confident that we're going to be able to get that, as is the county, accelerated and get it done. The funding is in place from the federal level. We have to accelerate it a year, and we have to match it, of course, with county and city money. But the county has indicated they are willing to do that. Of course, the city would be willing to do that. So, we now have to work with moving the project forward. Very confident we're going to be able to make that happen. The only other road project included in the one-mill that requires a local match would be, excuse me, Metro Parkway right at Van Dyke, which is a very large project. It would go from Van Dyke about 1,200 feet to the rear property of what is equivalent to the Home Depot rear lot, and all eight lanes would, that would all be torn out and replaced, be a big project. The county has indicated that they want to proceed with that project. They want to get it done this summer, and that they are going to come up with a match. The other projects under the one-mill are all city projects that are 100% city-funded. So, in summary, there's very low risk in terms of us not being able to deliver on the list of projects.
No further questions.
Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just let me gather my notes here. So, there's obviously some, quite a bit of misinformation that's going around between the residents, the city, the city of Sterling Heights, the city council, Candace Miller, the county, JP Rea. There's all this misinformation that's going around, because when I came to this meeting this evening, I was under the impression that this project had been scrapped, that they were no longer pursuing this linear park. So, apparently, that's not the case, because residents are getting different information from the county than what I've seen. And Mr. Vanderpoel mentioned that, you know, there has been no communication from the county that has clarified exactly what their position is. So, I guess if we're talking about, and let me say that I don't appreciate that either, this sort of misinformation that's been giving, that's been not given to the city council and given to the residents, because the county needs to operate in a more professional way. So, when it comes to a resolution, I guess, I don't know what I would be voting on, because I don't, I've seen a preliminary plan that showed what could potentially be there, but I haven't, I've seen nothing else since then. So, I would like to have more time. Like I said last or two weeks ago, I'm still in the information gathering phase. I want to get all the information before I make a decision. I am leaning a certain way, but, you know, I am the type of person that wants to get all the information before I make a final decision. So, I would still like to see the county come up with a public forum. And I want the county to come to the residents of Sterling Heights with a concrete plan. Now, I know that that can't happen next week. So, if we set a date sometime, maybe in the summer, where they said, "Okay, we're coming to you, the residents of Sterling Heights, and we're going to show you what a concrete plan is for that, for the drain." And then, at that point, we could say to ourselves, and then it's either a yes or no. You want it or you don't want it. And so, then, at that point, I could feel comfortable in voting yes or no, or signing a resolution that expresses my, how I feel about the, you know, whether or not I want to have the drain or the park in that drain. So, I just feel like this is being rushed, and I don't want to make any public statements as far as for or against until I have all the information. And until that time, I am just going to wait and hope that that information comes to us, and I know that Mr. Vanderpoel is going to be on top of it, and hopefully, will have something for us soon. But I want to see a concrete plan. I want a yes or no, that this is what's going to happen, depending on how the city council feels about it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. First and foremost, I just want to apologize for the numerous interruptions and for having to take a recess. It's certainly not something I like to do. My preference would be to try to talk to the individuals in the audience and, you know, calmly, hopefully, plead with them to stop making interruptions, so that we can get on with the business of the meeting. Unfortunately, that didn't exactly happen, as I was hoping it would today. It's never my preference to do that. I certainly welcome and encourage as many people to participate in the meetings as possible. And unfortunately, when that happens, it just drags the meetings on longer and is disruptive. And, you know, we have speakers who come up here, and they say, they're very nervous to speak sometimes, and when they have to worry about if they say something that the audience doesn't like, being criticized from people behind them, it can be very nerve-wracking and difficult for them. So, I just respectfully ask, if you're going to be here and you're going to be participating in the meeting, please show respect for the speakers when they're speaking. You know, the city council members show respect and professionalism by sitting quietly and allowing you to speak without rolling eyes and without laughing at you or without disrupting you. And so, that, I can tell you, because people have told me, that it's very nerve-wracking for them to be up there wondering what's going on behind them. So, I just would ask that courtesy for speakers in the future. Mr. Vanderpoel said a lot of what I wanted to say, and so, I'm not going to repeat that. But what I do want to say is this, when I started hearing back and forth, you know, one resident who lives on the drain was saying one thing about a conversation with Commissioner Miller, and another thing was being reported to me, I just decided to pick up the phone and call her. And I did talk to her, and she confirmed that she had met with residents who live along the drain and who would feel that they would be negatively affected by developing the drain into a linear park. And I think the message that she gave to them is the same message that she gave to me, which is that she heard their concerns, and she said, "Look, I was, I ran for this office not to come up with new amenities to develop in communities in Macomb County." She said, "I ran for this office to improve infrastructure, to make sure we have clean water, make sure that we have effective, efficient infrastructure." And that's what her commitment is, and that's what she's going to do. Now, she said, as she was looking at all these different assets throughout the county, this is an asset that the county has, and could it serve a dual purpose? She said that it could, and she still believes that it could. But what she also made very clear to me is not that she was pushing the buck on the city council, or not that she was saying, "I have nothing to do with this." Clearly, she was here and she presented the plan to us. What she said was that she was going to focus her energies on doing what that job entails. The Public Works Commissioner is in charge of maintaining the county drains and the county's infrastructure, and she was going to focus her energies on that. She told me that she had secured a $1 million EPA grant and was confident that she might even secure a second million dollars from the EPA in order to do infrastructure improvements, in order to make the drain better at what the drain does. Because I think we're all want that to be our number-one priority here, is making sure that the drain works. Heard from a lot of residents today that says, "The drain floods." The drain's purpose is to make sure that we don't have floods in our basement, in our houses, and I couldn't agree more. So, that's certainly something that I agree with Mr. Shannon, in that, you know, I'm not going to support a plan if the county comes back and says, "We got this plan, we're going to scrap the drain's functionality in order to provide a linear park." I wouldn't support that. I would only support something that improves the functionality of the drain and any amenities that would be secondary, and I certainly wouldn't support it if it in any way impacted the functionality of the drain. We know that there's flooding there. We know that it, that drain gets very high, but in the same sense, if you've ever been, you could probably go right now to Dodge Park, where there's a wonderful trail system, and it's completely impassable after a rain event like the ones that we've had. You simply can't use the trail system along the River after a severe rain event. Even after a minimal rain event, it floods, and people know that, they avoid it. You know, one speaker said that animals are smarter than humans. I don't know. I don't necessarily agree with that. Think humans are pretty smart. When the trails are flooded, you don't go on the trails. But getting back to my conversation with Commissioner Miller, she made it very clear that this land is available. It's publicly owned land, and if there was a plan put in place, either through the county level or in conjunction with the city, that she would be open to pursuing those opportunities in the future. But she is not making that a priority of hers. Her priority is focusing on the infrastructure. If you were here, if you watched the meeting in February, JP Rea from the Economic Development and Planning Office was the one really talking more about the amenities there. So, if this plan were to come into fruition, it would really be coming from the county executive's office, or maybe at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and in conjunction with the Planning and Economic Development Office. So, what I've encouraged them to do is, as was said here by, I believe, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Vanderpoel, find out from the public what the public would want. Now, I understand, we had 11 speakers today who were very passionately opposed to development of the drain. We have 133,000 residents. So, when people say to me, "Why don't you do what the residents tell you to do," and their only sample size is a group of residents who come up to council meetings, I respectfully say, "You don't necessarily see the phone calls that I get, you don't see the emails that I get, you don't hear from the people that run into me when I'm out, when I'm at parks and wherever else, that express to me how they feel as well." So, as Mr. Gharapi said, speaking up here, there's a, he started, or somebody started a petition, and I saw that there's plenty of support for that, too. The folks who were in favor of this plan didn't really start reaching out to me until they heard that it was scrapped. So, I think it's far too early to be talking about any sort of formal action. Formal action about what? I mean, if the county proposes a plan, then at that point, I would say, "Well, we can take formal action." Now, if the city council would like to pass a resolution saying that we don't want any amenities in the Sterling Relief Drain under any circumstances whatsoever, I suppose we could do that, but I would certainly vote against that. You know, we've got valuable land there. What if we could develop some sort of a proposal that doesn't have a bike and hike trail, but we're able to secure funding from the federal government or grant funding that improves the vegetation in the area and improves the habitat for animals? But the county says, "Well, the city council passed a resolution that said they don't want anything there, so we're not going to, we're not going to waste our time doing that." I think it's just, it's not the right time to vote on something, and if we were to vote on something, I would, I guess I would, I would have, you know, obviously, I can't say what I would vote on, because nothing's been presented. So, I would say that from Commissioner Miller, it was more, "I'm focusing on what my job entails." And in no way, shape, or form did she say, and from speaking with the residents, who I believe talked to her, I don't think what she was saying is, "Hey, I don't have anything to do with this, blame the city council." She's not passing the buck or trying to do this hot potato. That was not the impression I got from directly speaking with Commissioner Miller. It was more, "We have the land. If there's a proposal that's put together by the county, either by the county themselves or in conjunction with the city, I'm all ears, but my job is focusing on this drain and getting this drain fixed." And so, that's what I think she's going to be doing. So, I would just, like I said, to me, as I've said before, I think parks, bike trails, hiking trails, you know, improved vegetation, all of these things are wonderful things, and they make the community a better place. I think that the trails along the Clinton River, we're a better city for having that trail system. I think we're a better city when we take something that, right now, is 250 or 300 feet wide, and it's just barren grass, even if it was, even if it was, even if it looked like a country club, as Mr. Marshallone said, it's just empty land. And... And we can do better than that. Doesn't have to be a bike trail, doesn't have to be a hike trail, but we've heard from 11 people today that said things about security issues, and crime, and litter, and animal waste, and all of these things. And it was almost as if, it was almost as if they were saying, "These trails have never been tried anywhere else in the world, and if you do this, this is what's going to happen." Well, we know that these trails have happened. They happen, we have these trails in our own city, we have them all throughout Macomb County, they're all throughout the country. All of these issues, these concerns that people bring up about safety, about security, about people surveilling houses, they just don't happen. So to me, that's why I ask, just try to reach, try to look for other examples in other communities where there's good studies that show that property values increase when you have these trails. This is, as Mr. Vanderpoel said, this is something that's going to last for years. You're not going to wake up in a week and there's going to be a trail in your backyard. It's going to take years for this to play out. So let's not shut the door on what could be a middle ground between the members of the city council here, the members of the community, the people who would like to see more parks and more trails in the community, and the people who don't want anything in their backyard. Just keep the dialogue open, and let's see if we can reach a resolution that everybody is in favor of and everybody could support, or at least a lot of people could support. Because I do think that there is some middle ground to be found here, so I'm hopeful that we can find it. With that, I guess I will say, we do have another budget hearing a week from today, so be here at 6:30 if you would like to get more information about the road plan we have this year. You can rest assured, I mean, a lot of people, whenever you talk about anything other than the roads, people say, "You're not focusing on the top priority." Come here, back here Tuesday if you want to hear more about the roads, and you want to hear more about all the great things going on in the city of Sterling Heights. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting into the closed session to hear a legal opinion.
So moved, support.
We moved and supported. Ms. Zeriska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarofsky?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, seven to zero. We will adjourn into closed session. There's a possibility that we may return.
Yeah.